I would like to open our meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Board of Education for April the 12th, 2016. Dr. Droudi, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Muy buenas tardes para los miembros del público. Les quiero decir que tenemos audífonos para escucharles interpretación al español si lo desean. Muchas gracias.
And we also have headsets for the hearing impaired. Please indicate if you need a headset. That moves us to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
We don't have any of those today.
Okay. And next is the superintendent's report.
Instead of having the superintendent's report today, we're actually going to have a student board report. And to do the honors, we have San Marcos High School student Chloe Stevens.
Hi there. I'm Chloe Stevens. I'm a junior at San Marcos. So from La Cuesta, the students are researching local companies and learning about what they do and who they employ. Alta Vista Middle College, their seniors are working on their Something That Matters projects, and the juniors are preparing for mock interviews. Alta Vista Independent Studies students are studying the driving question, what are dreams in metaphor and reality? How do our dreams impact our present, past, and future as individuals, a country, and a global community? Students will read, write, discuss, and share ideas around this topic. They are also planting a spring garden with tomatoes, zucchini, and other vegetables. From Dos Pueblos High School, the seniors had their senior assembly on April 8th, consisting of the prom fashion show sponsored by Men's Warehouse, as well as the unveiling of the 2016 prom theme and the senior bests who will be featured in the year's yearbook. They are having a committed campaign the first week back from spring break to promote drug and alcohol abuse prevention. They will have speakers come to talk to different classes, as well as activities that relate to being drug and alcohol free. The Letterman's Club Signing Day ceremony is honoring their students who are committing to play four-year sport -- play sport at a four-year university, sorry, on April 14th at 1:00 PM in their gym. From San Marcos High School, prom will be held on Saturday, April 23rd, at the UCSB UCEN hub from 8:30 to 11:30. The class officer elections will be held April 21st and April 22nd. The San Marcos Performing Arts Department will present the musical Nine to Five, and it will open on Thursday, April 28th. Shows will take place at 7:00 PM on April 28th through April 30th, and as well from May 5th through May 7th. And from Santa Barbara High School, class officer election results will be announced on Friday, April 15th. The Don's Met Cafe will be going to New York City from April 16th through April 21st. And the Santa Barbara High School Theater's Hair will open Thursday, April 29th. There's some exciting news for the Santa Barbara Unified School District was announced just before spring break. So two teams were named CIF Southern Section Forward Academic Team Champions for having the highest team GPA on their sport, the Dos Pueblos Girls Tennis Team, and the Santa Barbara High School Girls Swim and Dive Team. These teams will be honored prior to a Los Angeles Angels game on April 26th. Dos Pueblos had two teams finish in the top five, while Santa Barbara had five teams finish in the top five. And although San Marcos did not win any academic team championships this year, they had 11 teams finish in the top five, which was third most in the entire Southern Section. In addition, Sarah Douglas from San Marcos High School and Rebecca Barado from Dos Pueblos were named Female Student Athletes of the Year, while Blake Katsev from San Marcos High School and Travis Craven from Dos Pueblos were named Male Student Athletes of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to board comments and correspondence. Board, any comments, correspondence? Mr. Herron.
Just a couple things. I did attend Adams and their ICAN art show, and as usual, I'm always very impressed with those art shows. I also went to the LCAP meeting at San Marcos High School. And I'll just say that we need to look carefully next year, those of you who are still here. That process needs some help, because I understand that at San Marcos, there were four or five people, and DP, there were about the same, and I think Santa Barbara had a few more. But it's not getting the public input that you would desire for something like that. So for future, I hope the recommendation goes forth that it needs to be looked at from a more prospective, getting more people involved, if that's the goal, and I presume that's the goal. But it was rather disappointing. Oh, and that Adelanti School Board meeting, always interesting to go to that. A side effect of what we do up here, because they follow us in compensation plans, they were hit with $50,000 unexpectedly and took it out of reserves. So that's a side effect of what we do up here, and I'm sure Peabody and Santa Barbara Charter are probably the same, I don't know for sure. But we need to keep in mind that what we do up here affects the charter schools, too. Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments, correspondence? We move to announcement of closed session action. We had nothing to report for closed session action. Report on student discipline a little bit later on the agenda. Now we move to public comments on non-agenda matters within the jurisdiction of Board of Education. I think we have one.
Mr. John Houchen.
Good evening, Board. I'm John Houchen, Santa Barbara Teachers Association, and I'm just here to speak briefly about the Children's Education Healthcare Protection Act of 2016. This is a proposition to replace Prop 30, and I know all of you are keenly aware of Prop 30 and its value. This particular initiative would extend the tax rates and profits or income for the state for the next 12 years. Eight to 11 billion annually is expected to come in from this. It will increase funding for public schools, colleges, increase funding in the Reading Day Fund, help the state to meet and expand its obligation to schools and colleges, and frees up budget dollars to be spent on healthcare and other priorities. Now, many of you have probably seen this petition. More than 700 of these have been distributed to teachers in Santa Barbara Unified, and California Teachers Association has distributed almost 250,000 or more. Our efforts are to get this on the November ballot, and we're going to need lots of signatures just to get that onto the ballot. My question to you is, and proposal, is if I might share some of these with you, and perhaps, Dr. Droudi, you could also share with the cabinet, and anyone who might be able to just sign for themselves. Each petition only takes seven signatures. If you can sign for yourself and find six other people between now and Monday, this will really help us to attain our goal. And as you know, we want to keep the funding going after Prop 30, which sunsets in 2018. So with that said, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, there's one other thing. Each petition has a talking points and a frequently asked questions inside so that you can bone up on this and answer questions of people that you're speaking with. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Peter Ott.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Ott. I'm a parent. My son Patrick Ott is finishing up his last year at La Colina Junior High School. And we applied to an academy at Santa Barbara High School called the Mad Academy. Perhaps you've heard of it. Patrick, we submitted the entire application. Patrick has excellent grades, excellent referrals, references, and Patrick was accepted to the academy. We followed the entire application procedure to the letter. However, we learned shortly after he was accepted that there was one important form that was missing. It's called the Request for District Transfer. My point is simply that unlike other academies in our system, the Mad Academy did not make it clear that this form was required. You can go to their website. I have printed out the page of requirements, and it's missing. And unfortunately, well, we're devastated. Unfortunately, Patrick was told that his application was denied simply because the single page was missing from our application. Very simple form. It's mostly contact information, requires a signature by an administrator from San Marcos High School where we are located, and it's a shame. So I merely state this, that we need to make sure that the academies clearly communicate all the requirements for applying, because it's just not fair to put a bureaucratic error, in my opinion, on the future chances of my son. Patrick is perfectly suited for this program. He has all the aptitudes. He was accepted, and we were welcomed into it, and even the gentleman in charge of it, Dan Murray, was really sorry and really disappointed that he had to tell us this news. So please make this a requirement, number one, and I also ask you to please, if it's at all possible, to reconsider Patrick's application to this Mad Academy so that he can have a place next year. This is the only chance. He has, we have to apply in the ninth grade year. After the ninth grade year, it's no longer possible. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your information. If you have an opportunity and you haven't contacted Ms. Wagonick, I would encourage you to follow up with Ms. Wagonick.
We have. We followed up with Ms. Wagonick and also Mr. Droudi. Patrick's counselor has been in touch, Athena Sims, has been in touch with Ms. Wagonick. You know, I just hope there's a way that we can get this resolved.
Thank you. That moves us to no other comment. That moves us to acceptance of donations for April 12th, 2016.
I move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Just one question. All of them were to a trust. All the donations on that list said something about, I don't have it in front of me, maybe --
I'll pull it up.
All sports related, but to, each sport had a trust, volleyball trust, basketball trust. What are those trusts that they're talking about in that document?
I would have to, I would have to kind of look back at that and get back to you with an answer on that.
Okay, thank you. I was curious when I saw that.
So we had a motion by Ms. Limon, seconded by Ms. Parker, I believe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That moves us to the consent agenda. Board, are there any items you'd like to pull?
Nothing I'd like to pull, but I'd like to thank John Houchen for his 24-plus years serving our district and the kids, and mainly from the art standpoint, but the last few years representing our teachers, and president of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, and we wish you well in your retirement, and kind of sad to see you go. And I can tell you that in my experience, every time there's a question, he freely answers it or asks it if necessary, and has always been a pleasure to deal with. Thank you, John.
Yes, likewise. Yeah. Thank you.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as listed. I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That moves us to a public hearing. We don't have any items for a public hearing, so we move to the action agenda. First item is board action on student discipline, case number 2015-1630.
In case 2015-16-30, I move to approve the stipulated agreement for an expulsion with enforcement suspended, ending in June 2016.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Mr. Herron. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moves us to item number two, board action on student discipline, case number 2015-16-35.
In case 2015-16-35, I move to approve the hearing panel recommendation for a full expulsion, ending in January 2017.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We move to item number three, acceptance of public disclosure of 2015-2016 collective bargaining agreement for the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, the California School Employees Association, per AB 1200. Ms. Chetay.
Sorry, that's my phone.
That's good.
On cue!
It's a little prophetic there.
Good evening, Board members. In accordance with AB 1200, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title V, Section 15449, an employee compensation must be approved by the governing board and be available for public inspection prior to granting such compensation. Current budget will be adjusted for increases to ensure the beginning fund balance for 2016-17 adopted budget reflects all the costs. The district has negotiated a 4% net increase with Santa Barbara Teachers Association and California School Employees Association, CSCA, for 2015-16. You also have tonight, after this, the possible approval of the management also. This document has all of those costs included in it, and this will, if you approve this document, will go to the county education office for approval.
Board, Ms. Parker.
Just noting that the document does make clear that we will have to make 6.7 million in reductions. Will the county be okay with that being something that will be happening shortly as opposed to prior to receiving this document?
Right. I spoke to our, he was me, our district financial advisor, Steve Towner up at the county, and I relayed that information to him, that as long as that we can keep solvent during this time, when we make the cuts, the cuts have to happen before that starts to not be solvent. So we will make cuts this year for 2016-17. Those were ones that were what we called the easy cuts, and they were things that we could do right offhand, like not fill positions, not, you know, seek, you know, having teachers for attrition that we, you know, due to declining ADA and things like that. So we will bring you a list, as you requested last time, for the 2017-18, and this will be an extensive list, and like you have always seen before, and you pick and choose. Thank you.
Mr. Herron.
We have three minutes with this document, and we could have a workshop on this and probably still not understand it. You know, I'm going to vote for it because we have to, and this pales out exactly what I was talking about two weeks ago when we approved the agreement. At that time, I said we were 12 million in the hole, and this shows that, it says 6.7%. But in the fine print in here, not even fine print, in the assumptions, it basically says once we cut 6.7 million, that will take us down to our Fund 17. No money in the general fund, but our Fund 17, which is theoretically our safety net, it also was designed for Common Core and LCFF when we put it in there from the redevelopment fund. You know, in my experience, if I was told in my function in the private business, oh, by the way, we just heard that you're 4 million in the hole, somebody would say to me, what are you going to do today to start stopping the bleeding? And you're telling me we're going to start stopping the bleeding two or three years from now, in 2017, 2018, or?
Well, we're making about approximately three in this, in 2016-17. So we'll slow that down, but then an additional amount, we worked all day yesterday refining the ones for 2016-17, working within the list that you have. So
I would hope that even starting now, we'd be looking at every expense. A dollar saved today just means more in the future that's saved. And so I think, I would hope that every time a request comes through for money, that we look at it from the standpoint, hey, we're 4 million in the hole right now, today, and we're going to use reserves. And then next year, we'll be millions in the hole again. And the following year, millions in the hole again. That's no way to run a, and then we're leaving the new superintendent and the new school board with heck of choices in the future, and it's our own doing. We did it to ourselves. To me, this is the document I would have loved to have seen before we made all those decisions. I would like to see in the future that all three of the organizations, CSCA, SPTA, management, be done simultaneously, so we see the cumulative effect of those decisions. We made the first decision and signed a blank check for 240,000, 270,000 for one year. And then we did the SPTA, and now following this, we have the management, which is another 400,000. It just seems to me that as a board, we should have all these things in front of us and then make a business decision, do we want to go 4 million in the hole and 6.7 million, or is there a different way to do it? You know, it just seems to me that there's better ways to do this. It's awful to be looking at 6.7 million of cuts, and I know you say some are easy, but everything is not necessarily easy, but we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, number? Do we have a motion?
I will move to accept the public disclosure of the 2015-16 collective bargaining agreement for the SPTA and the CSCA, per AB 1200.
I will second.
Motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Limon. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to approval of agreement between all non-representative employees.
Ms. Chetay goes and sits down. Come back, Ms. Chetay.
So this is the agreement between the non-representative employees, representative employees, that's mostly, that's management and confidential. And Dave Henjank is our representative, but he is not here, he is sick, so I'm here to answer any questions you have about this. We don't have a Me Too clause for management, but it's basically, in the past, management has always followed, certificated. So we're here to ask that you approve the 4% for management.
Ms. Parker.
Yes, we obviously have a very long tradition that I would not want to shake up of essentially Me Too for all of our bargaining units, and non-bargaining units. When would this hit paychecks for, I think, has it already hit the paychecks for CSCA and SPTA?
No.
When is that all going to come down?
Very soon. April, we'll have the 4% in it.
For all?
For all employees.
Okay.
We, we haven't applied it to everyone until we got the AB 1200 in the management passed, but we have been preparing for this and practicing in our system. And the retro, if we're, if this all is approved, will hit on the 15th of this month, so Friday. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Herron.
No question, but I'll be voting no, and if anybody's interested, they can read the minutes from two weeks ago and see my reasons. Thank you.
I will move to approve the agreement with all non-representative employees for a 4% increase retroactive to July 1st, 2015.
I will second that.
Motion made by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Limon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes 4-1.
Thank you. So now I'm up for the TRAN.
Yes.
Okay. So each year, the district needs to borrow a tax revenue anticipation note, or what we call a TRAN.
We just flipped. So we had number, you had, we had TRAN at number six, so it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. Go ahead and take it. Yeah, since you're already up here.
I apologize. What we call a TRAN, to ensure it meets its cash needs. Since the district receives approximately 83% of its fund, LCFF funding from property taxes, as you are well aware, property taxes are only given, the majority of the property taxes are only given to us twice a year, December and in April. So between July and December, with all those months of payroll and other expenditures, our fun, our cash is crucial. So we have in the past borrowed up to 22 million in our TRAN. Last year, we borrowed 12, and we have it paid back by April of each year. So we're asking for not to exceed a 14 million. We feel that we'll only need about a 12, but we always put this into the resolution in case, in case the people who do the TRAN find something that we missed, or whatever, or we didn't do something, so it just gives us a little flexibility. But we only, we only borrow what we're actually going to go, what we call upside down, for one, for one month.
Board, any questions, comments?
Nope. I'll move to approve Resolution 2015-16-27, authorizing and approving the borrowing of funds for fiscal years 2016-17 using a 2016-17 TRAN.
Motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Mr. Herron. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us back to item number five, report on Proposition 39, energy funds received for year one and two projects, and approval of priorities for year three.
Mr. Steve Vizzellini will come present this.
Good evening. I was asked to report on our status of Prop 39. This year's funding allotment is $512,293, which is a little less than we anticipated. You guys, the board has approved the, or has identified the projects. The vendor has completed all of the year one and two projects to date. So what we're asking for is to have the board give us direction on which project package you would like to have applied for the next year's funding. I think they got in your packet, there's three different options. Excuse me. So the packages include Adams, Cleveland, and Franklin for Package A, which is actually the least expensive of the packages. The other two are for Galita Valley and for La Colina. So we kind of need direction. One of the things to consider is that the, we are underfunded compared to what we expected, so we're going to have to take some scope out of the project, whichever you choose. So my, my recommendation would be to consider Package A, because we get the most schools done, and will have more impact on more students.
Ms. Parker.
I think this is one of the things that we hate as board members, you know, having to essentially cut up the baby, but certainly, your recommendation makes a huge difference, certainly to me. So thank you, and that, that is what I would certainly support.
Yeah. Likewise, I think you just put it in really simple terms. We're going to impact more students. Makes a lot more sense in terms of that. Even though you look at some of the other schools, and obviously, we have a need in all of them, there's no question about that, but in terms of this, impacting more, more students at more sites, it's pretty straightforward.
Right. And the technology in those three elementary schools is older.
Yeah.
You know, the other two schools have had a retrofit with T8 lamps, so we're definitely going to make an improvement into the lighting in the rooms, too.
Yeah. Yeah. Ms. Limon?
Just for clarity purposes, when you said scale back, does that mean only choosing one of the packages, or looking at Package B and C and saying one of the two, or less?
We're saying one of these for year three.
Only one.
And then the other two would be considered for years four and five, depending on funding in those years. So we would, we would de-scope for whichever package you choose for us to use with this year's funding, we'll make sure we match that number, so we're not going to exceed it.
Any other questions?
Karius, you indicated that phases one and two are done, one, two, and three, I guess. How'd it go? What, how, what did you find?
It went very well. We did, I don't know if you saw the list, it's quite extensive. We had retrofits in, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight schools. So some of the schools focused on some of the exterior lighting where the money was saved the most, but Harding and Washington, for instance, got all-new lighting throughout their classrooms, and it's drastically different.
That's why I was wondering, have you seen it, actual effective at all?
Absolutely. It's, I've gotten very good reports. There's dimmable lighting now, so the teachers actually have some control of it. It's saving energy by shutting off when there's no one in there and moving around, they're off. Custodian walks in at night, it turns on instead of leaving the lights on all day till they get there.
The company we hired did a good job, and...
Seems so. We had a few punch list items, but the contractor and Naresco both were great, and they've gone through all of those and addressed all of our issues.
Good.
Any other questions, Board?
Is this something that you need an actual motion on, or is direction enough?
We were just looking for direction on which package you'd like us to put together, and then I'll come back to you for what are, whatever changes are made to the original agreement.
All right, then I think that we're good.
Yeah.
Motion to approve Package A?
Yeah. We could do that, just so it's in the record. Motion by Mr. Herron, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to approval of the request to transfer students with severe profound disabilities at Hilltop and Roosevelt.
Mrs. Helen Rodriguez will come present this, this item.
Good evening, Board, President Dr. Pedro Paz, Board members, and Dr. Droudi in Cabinet. I believe Mr. John Shetler presented this at the last board meeting, and if you have any additional questions, I'm here to answer.
Board, any other questions, comments? No other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the request to transfer students with severe profound disabilities at Hilltop and Roosevelt. I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Iverson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to item number eight, appointment of community member to fill vacant position on the Measure Q twenty-ten and Measure A twenty-twelve Oversight Committees.
Mrs. Barbara Quiani will come due to honors.
Board, I'm pleased to let you know that we have a candidate, a Mrs. Sarah, I believe it's pronounced Neck, who is willing to serve on two committees, the Measure...
So moved. You don't need to know more.
We can bypass the rest. The Measure Q two thousand ten Bond Oversight Committee, which is for secondary schools, and the Measure A two thousand twelve Parcel Tax Oversight Committee benefiting secondary schools. The recommendation is that we approve a two-year term for Sarah Neck to serve on the Measure Q two thousand ten Bond Oversight Committee, and she would be placed on the committee's tax preparer seat. Also, approval of a two-year term for Ms. Neck to serve on the Measure A two thousand twelve Parcel Tax Oversight Committee, and she would be placed on the committee, as the committee's business representative on that particular seat.
Not so moved.
Yeah, okay. I was just going to comment that, you know, please express the board's gratitude on, for her willingness to serve on two committees, and I think we're all quite impressed that she would want to do that, and that's really great.
Well, on top of that, it fills all the seats on both committees.
Exactly.
I will second that, and I'll just point out that, you know, Ms. Neck is quite accomplished and involved in a lot of other stuff as well, so I appreciate her willingness to take this on with the district in particular, because this is a very busy person.
I'll relay that, that appreciation.
Motion by Mr. Herron, seconded by Ms. Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moves us to the conference agenda, and the first item is Discussion of New Course, CCSS Integrated Math Two Plus Enrichment.
Mr. President?
Mr. Herron?
Is there any chance that H six, the Library Master Plan, could be moved forward?
You are correct. I apologize.
We have them sitting here.
Yes.
In another twenty, thirty, fifty minutes, they can be home with their kids or families, or studying their library techniques.
I, I know, I know one of them is, has two little girls who are at home waiting for mommy to come home. So, yes, I think you are absolutely correct. Let's move to item six, and we'll come back to item number one. So Discussion of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Library Master Plan for Secondary Schools.
Good, great. Prior to the implementation of the local control funding formula, the California Department of Education required that districts utilizing mandated block grants to support libraries conduct an annual approval of a library master plan. Santa Barbara Unified School District has continued to conduct the process of obtaining board approval for, for the library master plans. Here to help us address any questions and answer, address any questions and discuss the library master plans are our esteemed librarians in the secondary schools. I'll name them off, maybe you guys can come up here and, and, you can sit. So we have Ursula Farrell from Galita Valley Junior High, and Amy Woods from Lachalina. I don't see Shannon here. Kylene Shelton from Santa Barbara Junior High, from Desperos High School, Heather Magnner from San Marcos High School, Sherri Bryan, and from Santa Barbara High School, Marsha Barr. Without further ado, one of them will just discuss the plan.
Thank you all for coming.
And address any questions.
I'm, good evening, I'm Ursula Farrell, librarian at Galita Valley Junior High. Thank you for taking time to have us tonight, and especially for moving us up on the agenda. Very kind. I'm here to, prior to discussing the plan, we want to thank the board and the admin team, Dr. Droudi and Dr. Cash, who came to see us last year and said, I'd really like the librarians, the libraries of the district to have a steady funding source. And he asked us what we thought that should be, and we were pretty quick with an answer. And so we wanted to express our gratitude for that and just give you a very small half-page vignette of what we did with that, what our libraries are looking like as a result of that. And not that we didn't have money before, but this allowed us to do better planning, and it was just wonderful. So students are thrilled to come into the library and find the latest bestseller from an author they've been waiting to read, and lots of new current interest, current interest nonfiction books, including eBooks. Additionally, all readers from ELD, Sped, up through Honors and Gate know they can find materials in just the right reading and interest level. We've all been able to update our collections. And when students ask for a book, we're able to get it, or we've already gotten it. We all want our students to be culturally proficient in our purchasing books that support that goal. In all of our libraries, students are excited to be able to come in and find an open computer, laptop, or iPad. This year, we have improved students' access to technology by adding more hardware in the form of Chromebooks and additional computers. They appreciate that our technology has been updated and is current. Kids really appreciate that. They also love the portability of the Chromebooks and the iPads. Students no longer want to sit in a row of desktops. They love the ability to be able to grab an iPad or a Chromebook, and we've created little niches in the library where they can work alone or in groups. So these devices allow students to find a comfortable spot and look at their grades, work on group projects, or access resources on the web. We are all in the process of creating these special community and work areas in our libraries, some for whole class use, some for group work, and some small, quiet reading spaces. There are kids who really appreciate a quiet space in their day. For research, we purchase online databases and eBooks that support the Common Core standards and, and the curriculum. Students are able to access these resources anywhere, whether at school or at home, on a computer, a tablet, or from their phone. So that's just, just working so well. We are thrilled, and we want to thank you very much for, for years of ongoing support, and it reflects in really these, these libraries that our students have access to, and we appreciate being able to be part of that process.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you, I appreciate that, because one of my questions was, on page ten of this plan, it refers to funding, and I wanted to touch base, because I wasn't sure how aspirational this still was, or if this had actually happened. And so it sounds like it actually happened, and that's great. So that, that is really good news to hear. A couple other things. One is that the district has, with the transition to the Common Core, and also with the huge hit of the recession, there was a long time where we were not buying, we have not been buying textbooks. That will be changing. And back before, and the plan kind of touches on this, in terms of talking about the role that librarians play in textbooks, but back when we used to buy, you know, actually have groups that met and talked about what curricula to buy, librarians were often the ones that were actually the lead on that, that they were actually running those committees and bringing like a math department together and sort of explaining the process and taking them through. Is that something that will happen in the coming years, as we hopefully will?
Yeah.
And maybe that's a Dr. Droudi question?
Yes.
And so that's one thing that I hope you'll address. And then the second is, I want to point out again, this is the secondary library master plan, and we still need an elementary district librarian, and I hope that the district will be using these librarians here as resources to reach out to their people they know, librarians they know, teacher credentialing programs for teacher librarians, so that we can get somebody great in. So I hope that they're going to put you to use on that. So maybe Dr. Droudi?
So I'll address the first question. First is that we initiated through negotiations the Teacher Learning Advisory Committee, which involves teachers from all the different grade levels, and all the different subject areas, and from different sites. That organization will be co-chaired by an assistant superintendent, the SPTA representative, and also a principal, a site principal. So we're in the process of electing those positions right now. Our first meeting will be on the twenty-sixth, to first talk about the, the mission of the organization, but that organization will be the one to review instructional materials in alignment to our district divisions. So we're excited about it. We initially did not include the librarians by mistake.
Thank you for that.
As a part of that committee, but we quickly made the correction, and they are now, they were, we will actually have two librarians, the junior high and high school librarian as a part of committee. And also, once we hire an elementary librarian, we'll include the elementary librarian as well.
I had a similar question to that, and I think that it's great to hear. I'm sure you all are excited to be part of that process and need to be part of that process. I think we're, as a board, probably all in agreement that that needs to happen.
We're all fighting who gets to be in it. Yeah, we're all fighting for the job.
There's an open area out there.
And thank you also for bringing that to our attention. I think that that's useful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And the second, the second question, I'm sure Mitch will weigh in on, weigh in on this, but we struggled trying to attract a librarian that's credentialed, but I'll, I'll have Mr. Torino talk more about that.
Yeah, in the recruiting process for that elementary librarian, we actually had some interviews that we thought people were, were good in very certain areas, but not good in all the areas. And I want to make sure that Sherri Bryan and Donna Ronzo, Dr. Ronzo, to get credit, because we could settle for somebody who might be good in one area, but we might have to support them in another area, and, and they won't let us do that. They're really demanding a certain expertise in all the areas that we know that person will be needed, and so it's really good that we have some, I guess, some time, some luxury of time, to look for the, the appropriate, right person who can really take the elementary librarian system and really engage and articulate with our secondary, but really do a great job, because we have two brand-new libraries in our elementary system, so it really looks like we can utilize that in a very progressive way.
Board, any other questions, comment? Mr. Herron?
I've always enjoyed, I mean, every year, I enjoy looking forward to the reports from the librarians. It's something special about it. I know you put your heart and soul in doing the report number one, which I really appreciate, and it's good to hear what's going on and learn, and I appreciate, sometimes I get flyers from you, and bulletins from you, and newsletters from you, and you're a vital part of our, every single school. So I really appreciate all the hard work, and I have enjoyed seeing you every year.
Thank you all. I really, I think on behalf of the board, we recognize the incredible work that you do, how much you really mean. I mean, I, I still get excited every time I go to the library, you know? Walking through a campus and take us through the library, especially the new ones that we've, we now added to the school district, and if you haven't had a chance to visit anyone out there, they're, they're pretty incredible. I mean, it's just, it makes you want to sit down and read a book, you know? That's great.
So one question I have is this, the plan does at some point require board approval, is this just going to come back on a consent agenda?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Herron, seconded by Ms. Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. So you don't have to come back now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now we move back to item number one, Discussion of New Course, CCSS Integrated Math Two Plus Enrichment.
Yes, thank you. After three years of implementing the Common Core state standards in math with our, with our course sequence, we had several conversations with our math leaders at the high school level, the principals, and also counselors, in terms of our course pathways, and it was determined that we needed to implement an enrichment component of Math Two as a part of the pathway. To give you context, in terms of different pathways, at the junior high level, we have three different pathways for math, which is math, regular math, eight, and math, Math Seven and Eight. And there's an enrichment component of Math Seven and Eight, which focuses on additional depth and depth, novelty and complexity. And, and, and there's a third option, which is the compaction pathway, which is three years of mathematics into two years, Math Seven, Eight, and Math One. So there's three different levels at the, at the, at the junior high level. At the high school level, there is Math One, and Math One Enrichment, and then we drop to, we don't have a Math Two, uh, uh, Math Two option, so students that want to go on to take a harder level math would have to go into the compaction pathway. Based on our conversation, our experience, we feel that we need to incorporate a Math Two enrichment component, so they will, so that there will be a regular pathway, general pathway, and two different, more rigorous pathways, the compaction and also the enrichment.
Ms. Parker?
So that, that's what I was curious about, that whether or not compaction was going away, but it sounds like it's still there as a possibility.
Yes.
And is that going into Math Three?
Um, right now, the math teachers said, they actually, I proposed that idea, but they said they want to wait. They want to wait.
Because I'm, I'm also curious to see how this plays out over time, because originally, of course, we weren't going to have junior high compaction. Now we do have junior high compaction, and so I'm kind of wondering if, well, if those kids that were going to do that, maybe they've already done it in junior high, and it makes more sense just to keep the Math Two Plus Enrichment and keep things at Plus Enrichment afterwards. Well, I guess we'll wait and see, but, and students always have some flexibility, can go into things at different grade levels.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but this looks good.
The compaction pathway was just, the focus of theirs is, is, is speed, and some, and the math teacher will say that they do sacrifice the depth and complexity in going through there, but at the same time, you have students that want that speed, and families that want that speed, so we want to give them the option of both.
Any other questions? No other questions?
No other questions.
So we move to item number two, discussion of teacher induction program job description.
Mr. Mitch Torino.
President, Dr. Paz and board members, we're proposing to create a teacher induction program. And we need to do that, oh, we don't need to do that, but we want to do that in order to get our preliminary teachers who will come in right out of a program, give them, it's, it's similar to what our next generation of what BITSA used to be. The CTC, the Commission on Teacher Credentialing oversees and governs this, this program. Right now, we have new teachers that typically take between three to five years to, to teach at a level that maximizes their student growth. What we're looking at is to create a position where that person would be within our district and oversee our own teachers and possibly look at integrating some of our feeding districts to have teacher induction program for their teachers as well. So we have before you a job description.
Ms. Lehman.
Mr. Torino, I feel like in the last, was it 12 months? We had something like this come forward. There was a brief conversation. It went away. It was related to some grant funds that we had. Can you kind of tell us where we're at? Is this an extension of that conversation? Is this something revision?
Yes, it's a revision of that conversation. Part of what we're looking at is using the teacher effectiveness grant. What we're looking at here is actually to take back some of the funding that we give to county because the county runs this program currently. They run a TIP program because they used to run BITSA as well. Our objection, our idea is to retake those funds from that, but also use some of that effect, that grant to kind of teach our own teachers within our own district. It gives us a little more control over those teachers and some of the information and support and training that they get because we get to direct that as a district.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parker.
Is there a tremendous amount of variability from year to year in how many people, you know, how many new hires we have? I'm just wondering, I could imagine a year where this person has so many people that they're working with and then years, some years where maybe, hopefully not so many. It's great to be in years where we have staff that are more developed. So I'm just kind of curious about that.
The amount of teachers coming into us will really depend on our retirement and our retention. We know that there's a teacher shortage. So we believe that what we're going through right now, I think last year we hired 60-plus, the prior year we hired 90-plus. We think that at some point that will taper off, but it looks like we will be holding steady at some point where this person can do other things as far as the support of not just our teachers, our new teachers in the induction program, but possibly do some other professional learning training with some of our newer teachers, say three to five years, instead of just that first one to two year.
And I was going to ask the same question because I think one of the, along the same lines, thinking about the variability, but also thinking about the sort of moving beyond the, just the first two years. Because I know that, you know, for a lot of teachers, it takes a bit of time. And it's not the same path for every teacher. For some, they need a little more support. It's a little more challenging. They have a harder time. So it's good to hear that you're thinking more that beyond the first two years, they're thinking three to five years and start thinking about how that can happen. I'm wondering too, if part of this too, is even thinking beyond that five-year period of time of how this person could possibly continue to work towards even supporting teachers who are still somewhat struggling beyond that five-year period? Would we, you know, is that something to think about? Because at that point in time, they're here.
Right.
Is that something that?
We could try to integrate that position with, part of what we do with our PAR.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
In addition to hopefully doing it better by having it in district and control, is there also a good economic reason we're doing it? Are we able, going to be able to do it less costly than paying SBCO?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts? Thank you so much.
Bring back for consent.
Yes, please.
Can I?
Ms. Lehman.
Sure.
I would be interested to hear in the future, just kind of how it goes, to be honest with you. What kinds of things come out? I think particularly the ability, and we didn't really talk about this, but also to be creative in how we provide support to teachers is something that I would definitely be interested to hear, I think, once the person's been in the position for a while, maybe getting some of that feedback to know how we can best support that role and really support our teachers, you know, not just in their first year, but as they continue.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move to item number three, family engagement update. Dr. Dodi.
Within our cultural proficiency plan, we have our family engagement initiative. And I think that's actually one of the areas that we're proud of. So we're delighted to be able to provide you with an update. So Dr. Jacqueline Mora will come present the update for us.
Good evening, Dr. Paz, members of the board, Dr. Dodi, cabinet and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on our district-wide efforts around family engagement. As shared previously, we drafted a framework for family engagement that outlines the expectations and action areas that we will focus on. It is from this framework that our site leaders have engaged their community and developed actions and activities to support family engagement. As we think about family engagement, it is important that we have a common definition and understanding. So this comes from the CDE. Family engagement is the pursuit of an integrated strategy to support the exchange of information, purposeful interaction, and meaningful participation among schools, families, community partners to support student learning and achievement. Within our framework, we have identified six parent learning objectives that support student learning and achievement. These include family literacy, early childhood and adolescent development, accessing and navigating community and educational systems, shared leadership, meaningful homeschool partnerships, and college and career readiness. These specific learning objectives can be met through the integration of actions and activities that range from district to site-based learning opportunities. Sites may also choose to develop external partnerships to deliver these learning opportunities to families. Today, we will be focusing on site-based actions and activities and on site-based external As part of our pursuit of an integrated strategy to engage our families, our sites as a collective have created and calendared a minimum of 350 learning opportunities to families. These next two slides illustrate only a sampling of these learning opportunities as they relate to the learning objectives identified in our framework for family engagement. Under family literacy, you will see that we've identified reading nights, grade-level specific informational events. For child and adolescent development, we have the importance of attendance workshops, workshops that focus on the establishing of rituals and routines. For accessing and navigating community and educational systems, I have identified Naviance and Neo Nights that schools have offered. They also have Fast For Workshops, Academy Nights at the secondary level, and also Special Informational Nights. Under the area of shared leadership, we have school site council trainings and monthly meetings, ELAC trainings and monthly meetings as well, and our PTA and foundation meetings that our principals lead. When we speak about meaningful homeschool partnerships, we look at Coffee with the Principal, where families have the opportunity to come in and talk to their site leaders regarding concerns or questions they might have about their school site. We also have our Back to School Night and Open House and various parent appreciation events that are held at our schools. In relationship to college and career readiness, you will see that our schools offer college nights, EL Pathway informational nights, reclassification workshops, and Avid Nights. These are only, as I mentioned before, a sampling of what schools offer. I want to highlight that the 350 activities and actions do not encompass all of the activities that our schools offer. Schools also offer various events such as fall festivals, Gérmes, different types of activities where families are able to develop meaningful relationships with other families and really build on the culture and climate of the school. The reason I identified these is because they align more closely to the learning objectives for families within our framework. School sites have also opted to develop partnerships with external vendors and organizations to provide additional learning opportunities for our families. In this slide, you will see that we've identified seven organizations or vendors that our sites contract with to deliver additional services to our families. The very top row, you will see the various organizations or vendors. The second row identifies the schools, the number of schools that receive services. The third identifies the number of sessions. And then the last row talks about the costs. In this slide, you will notice a difference from the original version submitted to you. UCSB has a longstanding partnership with two elementary schools and supports the implementation of the 12-week Maldiv Parent School Partnership Curriculum. The costs associated with this partnership are not paid to UCSB. The sites pay school staff to facilitate the training, provide transportation, and dinner for families. UCSB actually supports the schools by providing all the curriculum materials needed to facilitate these trainings. The Latino Literacy Project is a 10-week curriculum that is facilitated by site personnel and is offered at four of our schools. You will notice that the cost also increased in this particular area. The increase is associated with one school purchasing an additional curriculum in order to offer a spring course that builds on the fall session. Now, the purchasing of the curriculum is a one-time, one-time cost and sites need to plan for future sessions that will facilitate it, will be facilitated, pardon me, by their site personnel. They also need to plan for childcare and dinner costs that are associated, associated with providing this training. PK is a different vendor that we contract with and they offer a 10-week course that is presented at two of our school sites. And this has also been a longstanding partnership. We also have Just Communities that provides parent involvement through PETA, through Dialogue, pardon me, also known as PETA. This is an eight-week course offered at six of our schools. The cost of this parent education program is offset by various grants that Just Community provides in order to support, to support our schools and lower the cost. FSA also provides a 14-week course called Nurturing Parenting that has been presented at three of our schools. The cost of this parent education program is also offset by various grants that FSA provides and allows our schools to provide this service to our families. United Parents, Padres Unidos, offers various programs that range from one session to 10 sessions. And eight of our schools have contracted for their services. Lastly, we have KEDA and they offer a six-week course that has been presented to two of our schools. As we think about our family engagement offerings and our expenditures, it's important that we remember that we still have three months left of our academic school year and that this is only a draft. It is a living document and schools are still scheduling and offering various learning opportunities for our families. The preliminary expenditures associated with external partnerships totals $154,608. The school sites have used their site allocations to cover a total of $54,608. The Office of Community of Schools has strongly supported family engagement. The Community of Schools grant allocated $49,292 to support sites with expenses incurred by the delivery of services through these external partnerships. Furthermore, they provided an additional $50,708 that provided childcare, materials for these services, dinner, transportation, extra hourly for staff personnel that is delivering the curriculum, interpretation, translation services, and equipment that is needed in order to provide access to our families. So these are just a few of the things that were used in order to support families. So throughout my interaction with our site leaders and their school teams, I have seen a commitment to engaging our families through an integrated strategy. Today, I have shared with you a sampling of the over 350 learning modules and informational nights that our schools offer to our families and that align to our learning objectives for parents. This is by no means a complete list of all the opportunities our schools provide for families. I also did highlight the external partnerships that our schools have developed in order to provide additional services to families. Our next steps are to determine how these additional opportunities, how these external partnerships align to our framework's learning objectives for families. Thank you.
Ms. Parker.
All right, so there's obviously a lot going on at our schools in terms of parent engagement. When you look at it from the district level down to what's going on at the sites, are you seeing much, when you're talking about these 350 activities essentially or programs, are you seeing a lot of variation between schools in terms of, you know, schools of similar size? Is this school doing, you know, a lot more in terms of parent engagement than that school? Are you seeing a need for the district to step in and support certain sites and ask them to, you know, bring in more programs or not?
Well, I think we're all on a continuum, right? We're, we're growing as we develop our plans for family engagement. We have administrators that this is their first year at their school site, so we've been providing support. So I think we have to remember that we're all in different stages and we have to have a base. So this is the base by which we can identify areas of growth. I will actually be meeting with our principals again in May because this has been a process, this has been a journey that, that we've engaged in. I've met with them twice previously. So we have a third meeting in May to really discuss, so what were the successes of this year's plan? What were the challenges? And then what are our next steps as we, as you, as they begin planning for next year? Right? Because then we have to start thinking, based on what we did this year, how can we grow and improve? So I think it's, everyone's on a continuum and it's really a collaboration. And our role is to support in order for our site leaders to continue to expand and more fully engage our families, of course.
Ms. Lehman.
Thanks for the presentation. I have a lot of thoughts about family engagement. And I'm listening to this conversation and hearing, you know, that some of the conversations are going to be about what the sites want. And I want to caution us to only listen to what the sites want and to also see what works. Mr. Herron earlier today talked about the fact that we did LCAP meetings with less than 10 people at all schools. I don't, you know, my worry is that sometimes despite best intention, the engagement piece is not there. When you go to parent meetings, people aren't raising their hands, they're not participating. And I think, you know, yes, we just saw a menu of different programs with very different prices. If you actually break down the sessions per cost, it shifts how you think about the price because some of those with really big prices wouldn't necessarily be the ones that are as pricey per session. And so I just want to make sure that as we move forward, we're, we're, you know, it's delicate. I think last year and the year before, we've had parent groups come to us with concern, with concerns about changes that the district is making and really around, and also the communication piece. So at least for me as a board member, I'm glad the conversations are happening with the sites and with the principals, but I want to caution us to not only think about what engagement means for them, but to think about what engagement means for the community. And I know that, I mean, it's the first LCAP and we had so many parents here coming from a lot of these parent groups. We've continually seen, I mean, there's something to be said by the surveys that's not going to be measured, which is the number of times that a school board member is stopped on the street with, to have conversations about things that they learned in a, in a parent workshop or the number of emails we get. And so I think, I just, I think there's great intention, good analysis, probably some of the better analysis and really looking at exactly what we offer. That's what the school board's been asking. But I, I'm, you know, I want to be careful that this is a two-way street and that we don't lose some of the things that the surveys aren't capturing.
So if I may, if I may just respond, I do want to share with all of you, as I mentioned when I was here my previous time, we do have a parent engagement. when I was here my previous time, we do have a parent engagement committee that I meet with. I actually met with them last week, and we were having conversations exactly around that, right? How do we truly engage our families? How do we get more families involved? And they're sharing their ideas and their perspectives. And once I finish meeting with them, we have another meeting that we're going to be holding later on in the school year, I'm going to be compiling all of this information and sharing it with our site principals, because they are the voice. Our families are telling us exactly what they need, what they would feel, what would make them feel engaged in the process. And they've actually, we're actually taking the time to go through, and they're identifying what types of activities would resonate with them, what types of, what topics they want to see during these learning modules or these informational nights. So they're giving, they have the opportunity and the forum for, by which to share with me exactly what they want. And it's one way, right? And I'm, part of my conversations with our site principals is also asking them and requesting that they engage with their families in this, in a similar process. And they are doing it in various degrees. So yes, it's going to be an ongoing two-way communication, because we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our families, and the only way to do that is to ask them.
I have a couple of comments as well. I think one of the things that I always look at this, in this process, and maybe my comments are similar to Ms. Limon in terms of this, I have to look at it from the perspective of how well of a job do we do communicating things to parents? For example, we just, we had a parent came, spoke publicly to the board about a missed opportunity that we did not do. And I'm saying that as a missed opportunity because something, something went awry where that particular parent did all that he and his family thought were doing the right thing and missed something. So communication failed somewhere along the line, intentional or not, you know? And that's part of the piece that I look at, the work that we do. It's the biggest piece that we have to do. And so I would ask you also to not just look at the tangible things, the number of events that we have, the programs that we do. We have to look at the engagement we have with our community, with our parents, at a different level. And it's the level of engaging parents at a very basic way, which is they walk through the door, are we greeting them in a way? And I've shared as a board member my experience having gone to a school and totally been ignored, not as a board member, but anyone walking off the street. And so I think one of my things, and it is peeve, and it is one thing that just boils me, boils my blood, makes me upset, is that we don't do that. We don't. We have a lot of opportunities and we miss those opportunities. So I would just ask staff not just to look at it from the number of programs that we're doing, the number of nights that we're doing it, but it's the day-to-day stuff that we do. It's the kind of communication, like we've had conversations at this board where we're saying, you know, it's on the website. Well, how many people know that it's on the website? How do parents know that? How would they know? Right? So it's the same thing, you know? Even in this particular case where we had this one parent tonight who did do that, went to the website, didn't see the information, what happens? He didn't do it. He didn't follow through. He thought he was doing the right thing, but he didn't. So I would ask us to do, step it up, do a little more. It is all about that. And it's about how we interact on a day-to-day basis with everyone we meet. Even as a board member, we countless times, we have to respond to emails. I know all of us do that. You know, even if it's an item that we don't want to respond to, we respond, because it is our job, it is our obligation, it's the number-one duty that we have. Because that one parent that we're going to put off is the one parent who's going to come to us and say they weren't treated the right way, and their child missed an opportunity, like we heard tonight, which is something I don't want to come back to. I don't want to hear that. I think that's one of the pieces that I, as a board member, want to see us do much more in terms of that. And again, I think we've talked about it as a board, it calls for the fact that as a district, we need to do a better job in communications, we need a communications plan. I know we've been working on that, but that is something we can no longer afford to not look at. How are we communicating to the wider public and in particular to parents? Because all of us have had a number of encounters or emails sent to us about something around communication, and it's, sometimes they're heartbreaking. You want to do something, but you can't. And I think in that regard, we have to look beyond this. And so I would say, staff, you have to start looking at that. Everyone has to do a better job of that. It's customer service. Our number-one customers are our kids and the parents.
Ms. Herrent?
If I may? Yes. I think for us, when we look at family engagement, I'm sharing with you what we are doing. And we're going to, as I shared with you, our next step is going to be looking at how are these external partnerships directly aligning to the goals within our framework for families? The next layer is really looking at our cultural proficiency rubric and laying that over this, our parent engagement, our family engagement plan that we've developed. Each of the sites have developed this family engagement plan. So they've talked about, what are we doing? And the next step is going to be, how are we doing this? Are we making those connections with our families, just like you mentioned, on a day-to-day basis? And I think that will be our next step in relationship to that.
Jackie pointed out what I was going to say. So it is a journey, it is a journey. We have a picture of what a school should look like in terms of behavior, attitude, and actions, and the depiction of that is what we have in our rubric for cultural proficiency. So these are the actions that we want, but this has to impact how that picks, it needs to align with the picture that we want. Just kind of giving an example, we can, this could be done in a tokenized way. We don't want a tokenized way. We want a way in which it's actually what we call a cultural proficiency way, that everybody feels valued, connected to the school, and this is a part of that journey.
Yeah, and I agree. I think one of the things that I've learned through time is, you know, look at cultural proficiency as cultural proficiency of a family and not just a group of people, because it differs. All of us have different experiences. I, you know, someone may identify me as, oh, your family background is Mexican. Yes, it is. But is my family experience the same as Ms. Limon? Probably not, you know? So I think we need to kind of look at it that way, too, and I'm glad to hear that, because they're all thinking about that. It is a piece that's really important. I look at the communication piece, that is something that as long as I'm on the board, I'm going to continue to push for. We need to have a better communication plan as a district. We need to do that as a sort of wider perspective of how we do that every day, look at that, look at that and find out if we're doing a good job or not. Board, any other comments, questions? Ms. Limon?
I just have a clarification. How long do we have the Community of Schools grant for?
That is, that comes from the Office of Community of Schools with Dr. Patricia Madrigal. These are private funds that she, that she worked in raising and in order to support family engagement. So it's an ongoing process.
So there is no necessarily set number. So at some point, I mean, because the $154,000 is essentially not coming from our general fund. However, we do have an investment for community engagement. I mean, the position itself, right, is an investment, but I'm just thinking like money-wise, this could run out and it could change depending on a year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think, you know, to Mr. Herrent's earlier point about looking at the LCAP, and I look at that as, one, either people just didn't know, or two, they just didn't decide to show up because they didn't feel like their comments are going to be taken into account. I'm not sure which of the two it is, or it might be something that, it's neither of those two. But either way, we look at it as that's another opportunity, and we're missing those opportunities. And that's what I would like to emphasize, is that we are. We're missing an opportunity to hear from people. And sometimes we miss those opportunities to engage parents beyond that single time. It's like you've lost a customer. You think you, you know, I put it as analogy, you go to a restaurant, you have a bad meal, are you going to go back? No. And it's the same thing with parents. We miss that opportunity.
One of my points was, in the future, don't put on an event and hope people come.
Yes.
Find out where the people are and go to them.
Yes.
And that's, you know, get in front of people. We have tons and tons of organizations have meetings on a regular basis, and we need to have a calendar of all of the, every place that LCAP is going to be presented to somebody, have it on a master calendar.
Yes.
So that everybody knows when they can go and, and it's a presentation to a group of people and not, hey, we're going to have a 10 o'clock meeting tomorrow, everybody please show up.
I think your point is extremely well-taken. It reminds me of when we had presentations by our community academies, and Principal Sean Carey came, and the number-one thing that I remember from her presentation is, we went to the people where they were at. That's what we need to do. And you're right, I think there are times where we need to take that extra step and do that. You're absolutely correct. Thank you.
I will say that one exciting thing that I heard you say, which I feel like kind of loops all this in, is that by having these conversations with the principal, we can actually say, hey, we missed an opportunity. We didn't have them at the LCAP. We have all, you know, almost $200,000 worth of investment in parent engagements, but we didn't get them at the LCAP. We didn't get their input. That's a missed opportunity. So I did hear you say that there was going to be conversation about aligning it, and I feel like, you know, this is a start. This is definitely a start, and I think you got a lot of feedback, because we care a lot, and that's probably just it.
Yeah.
No, thank you. I welcome, welcome the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to item number four, First Reunion Administrative Regulation 51-11.1, District Residency and Administrative Regulation 51-11.12, residency based on parent guardian employment. Dr. Droudi?
I believe Mrs. Fran Wagnick, you're presenting this.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Paz and the board. Dr. Droudi, I'm bringing to you a new regulation that is intended to reflect changes in the law, specifically Senate Bill 200 and AB 224, which provide that a student will be deemed to meet residency requirements if his or her parent or guardian lives with that student in the place of his or her employment within district boundaries at least three days during the school week. The regulation also contains material formerly in Administrative Regulation 51-11.12, residency based on parent guardian employment. Authorizing districts to grant residency status to students whose parents or guardian is employed within district boundaries for at least 10 hours. That's the, it says here, Alien Bill, but it's the Allen Bill Transfers. And reflects provisions of those two pieces of legislation I mentioned earlier. Those will be sunsetting July 1st, 2017. So there are significant, that one significant change to the law which came out of a case in Northern California where, that I think all of you are probably aware of. So this reflects that change. In addition, we took the opportunity to make some proposed changes in some other areas in terms of residency, most notably changes to the type of verification and documentation that we require. And to link this back to our previous conversation in terms of engaging our families, I would say that our prior regulations, or actually our current, I don't want to make assumptions, but our current regulations are limiting to some of our families in that they require a utility bill and certain things. So with that, I will take any questions or comments that you have.
Ms. Parker?
I, what I see when I look at this is pretty boilerplate CSBA, which is pretty boilerplate new ed code. And so, because there are some things that I would normally have said, well, you know, it was actually kind of important to make it gas, electric, or water, like put that in parentheses next to utility service contract, but that's not what ed code says. And of course, there's just this whole idea of a declaration of residency executed by the student's parent or guardian. You know, in our district, it doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense to, but I'm sure that our basic aid feeders will still be following this up with their private investigators as they do. And other than that, I think, I guess one of my questions is, because this is a process that's going on right now, where we have schools asking students to verify residency, and so I'm just hoping that this would be, once we approve it, if it comes through on a consent at the next meeting, that we can just make sure it's implemented right away.
That's the intention, and what's not in here, and I should note, is that we will continue to require that annual proof of residency.
Ms. Herrent?
Can somebody explain that, underlined in green where it says, "and lives with the student at the place of employment for a minimum of three days during the school week"?
Yes, I could. So the example in the court case was that the parent worked in the home of the employer, and the student lived there. So they had a, part of the domicile was theirs where they lived together. So the student must be living with the parent where they are working.
Okay, thank you.
And I could see that coming up in here, definitely, so.
I just got a question whether you, how you see this impacting our enrollment to what degree?
I see it impacting it to the extent that we have perhaps families living in certain areas of our community where maybe currently the students going to school in, say, Oxnard, where that parent lives on the weekend when they go home, and this would give them an opportunity. I don't see it, I don't see a mushrooming effect from this, because we have, we have so many on the inter-district transfers, because we are pretty open to that, that students who, whose parents are working here in town, we usually grant those transfers at this time.
Okay. Any other questions, board? Thank you. I think you can bring it back on consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to item number five, First Reunion Board Policy 61-64.2, Guidance Counseling Services. Dr. Droudi?
Again, Mrs. Wagnick, would you explain that as well?
All right. I am excited to bring forth policy related to reflect another set of new laws, which expresses the legislative intent regarding the responsibilities of school counselors. It specifies required and optional components to be included in a comprehensive school counseling program. If the district chooses to offer such a program and requires that certain strategies be included in professional development related to career and vocational counseling, the policy also clarifies options regarding access to students by college and employment recruiters, including military recruiters. The policy updated to reflect the new law, which directs funding into the LCFF for the supplemental school counseling program for grades seven through 12 and for the 10th grade counseling program previously funded through the PRBG. Policy also expands material on, one, the qualifications of employees providing school counseling, school psychology, and school social work, and mental health counseling, as well as teacher-based advisory programs. All that to say that really what this does is prepare our board policy to reflect the move that our district is making towards adoption of the ASCA School Counseling National Model and the more prominent place that school counselors are taking in our local control accountability plan.
Ms. Parker?
Couple things. One is, again, this is pretty much boilerplate CSBA language reflecting the new ed code. And one question, certainly that I got from the public, and maybe other board members have this as well, is this is reflecting new ed code, but have counselors taken a look at it?
Have to, yes. So the head counselors have reviewed it with no, with no opposition, nothing that they would add to it. would add to it. And then they're going to take it back and talk to their, to their co-counselors.
And then the second question I have is, do you see this impacting counseling services day-to-day?
What I see this doing is, this language really brings, brings school counseling and the practice of school counseling in line with comprehensive school counseling. It brings us out of the late 1980s, early 1990s, and into, solidly into the 21st century. You know, and I think some of you know I have a passion for this subject. But school counselors, when NCLB and the whole school reform movement went through, school counselors were not really brought along or respected as part of the solution in that. Now we're catching up because they can and should play a very valuable role in serving all of our students. And I think if you read through this, and you're right, it's very boilerplate CSBA. And that's because CSBA has taken the national model and laid it out. And so, and there's really an equity, an advocacy, and leadership role for school counselors that is in here. So I know that this will go along with the plans to elevate what school counselors do. They already do this. It's a matter of, do they do it in a systematic fashion that's supported? Do they provide, are they provided the professional development that they needed? And thank you for approving our trip to the national conference, because that's going to provide our head counselors with the opportunity to get a head start. And then I'm bringing in national trainers to train all of the school counselors three times next year. So this is getting ahead of the work that we're going to do to organize the school counselors and the work that they do. Did I answer your question? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagnick.
Mr. Herron?
I think you've answered this question. In this document, it says, "a comprehensive counseling program if the district chooses to offer such a program."
Yes.
I presume your answer is, the district has, is choosing to have that program.
Well, it's in the current LCAP for 2016-17. So if that LCAP is approved, then we will be moving forward with the comprehensive school counseling model through the ASCA national model.
And I guess, in conjunction with other questions, does it add a huge workload to our counselors?
No. What it does is, is it really lays out and provides a conceptual framework for the work that they do and allows them to, and the big question is, how are students different as a result of what school counselors do? Being comprehensive and using the model allows them to answer that question, and that goes back to elevating their status as professionals and their importance.
Because we've been told over the years that their job is just too big. They've got too many children or students to counsel.
Right.
You know, kids complain that they don't see, or parents complain that kids don't see the counselor very often. I'm just concerned, is that going to change, is this going to change that dynamic? Are they, are we giving them too much to do?
Right. Now, that's a good question. There's nothing in here, and if, and I'd be happy to bring some of them back next time, but this, what this does is really lay out what they should be doing. And there are things that we ask our counselors to do that perhaps should be going somewhere else. And so a big part of this change is educating administrators and others on what is the proper role of a school counselor. So, and that's not to say that they don't, you know, the national recommendation is a 250 to 1 caseload. Ours is almost 400 to 1. So it's lower than a lot of places, but it's higher than what's recommended. So I'm not, I don't want to take away from that in terms of, but it's not all caseload. And if you, if you have a method and you have a way of approaching the work, then it's more efficient and you can serve more students. And part of what's in here is, you know, it's not all that one-on-one, direct work. It's going in and doing guided counseling, you know, doing that in the classrooms and hitting 30 students at a time. And so, and that's all in here, too.
It's always good when you hear you're going to add something, you take something away.
Right.
Always good there.
I think what you're trying to say is that this basically codifies what they could and probably have in certain circumstances, and it's a little more defined.
Right. And it's more up-to-date.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Board? Or we can bring them back in consent? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to item number seven, Discussion of 2016 Secondary Summer School Program for the school district.
Yeah, so our secondary site administrators have collaborated and have submitted the summer school schedule for 2016. You'll notice there, there is a summer school plan for intervention, support, and credit recovery for the high schools. And at the junior high level, what we call the Bridge Program, which is basically a component of the PEAK Community Schools Program. And that focus is more or less on enrichment and getting students acclimated to the high school before they enroll the next, the following year. Here to assist me is Mike Staring to answer any questions regarding the summer school plans for special education as well. So with that said, I'll leave it up for questions.
Ms. Limon?
I just have a general question. It says number of students to be served, but it doesn't really say number of students to be served. So how many, I mean, how many summer school students do we think we're going to have this summer? For our programs, not like that are on campus, but for our programs that we facilitate?
Yeah, so.
Total?
Yeah, we don't have the numbers here because, you know, this is the plan, but we will be coming back with another report on how we actually did. By an average, the high schools, off the top of my head, for credit recovery, we often average in math about 60, 60 students, 70 students.
Per high school.
Per high school. And then ELA about the same.
Okay. Special Ed?
Yeah, and it's about, it ranges from about 60 to 80 for elementary, and then 60 to 80 for secondary. There's more students who enroll and then sort of drop off because of summer plans, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Will we be getting an overview of the elementary summer school plans? Dr. Ramirez?
Yes, that's on the docket for next board meeting.
Great. Just following up on special ed, so it looks like the high schools each have their own program for extended school year, but all the junior highs go to Galead Valley Junior High? Or is Galead Valley the only one that has students that need extended year?
So each of the comprehensive high schools has a class that would serve students who very typically would qualify for the service of extended school year. So in all possible cases, we try to keep a student at their home school. And they tend to have higher enrollment, higher attendance. So, but for example, last year, we actually collapsed it from two sites to, or sorry, from three sites to two sites because there wasn't a large amount of students from one high school that wanted to enroll. Junior High, there are only, there are really only two classes, and so, yes, we do collapse them into one. And the vast majority of those students receive transportation, so it's not an impediment for them to get to the class.
Any other questions, comments, Board? No other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
We are at the last item for the agenda. Update on search for new superintendent. Couple items are updates. One is, I believe that we have on the website, the new updated profile with the inclusion of the, you know, additional surveys that we got from parents. So I think that was posted today. So if people are curious to look at that, it's updated, it's on our website. Probably can look at that whenever you want. And the second update in terms of the search is that I believe Friday is the closing date. Well, not really the closing date, it's the preferred application date, because we will still allow some applications to come in after that date, but the preferred date is Friday. So as a board, I know after Friday, we will have access to look at the applications thus far. So it's exciting period of time. I think I'm curious, as I'm sure all the other board members are, of seeing our applicant pool. And those are the two updates that I have, unless I'm missing something, Board? I believe that's it, right? Correct? So that brings us to almost the end of our agenda. Coming events, future agenda items? Ms. Limon?
So I just figured I would mention that at some point, we have to figure out graduations and all that good stuff that come.
It's time.
It's time. It's April, right? So that's the board who attends and all that good stuff.
Yes.
And then I also have a future agenda item, so I don't know if you have coming events. Okay. I'd like to, and I don't know if this is actually an agenda item, or if this is a little bit of a board email, or I'm not quite sure. But one of the things that's come up is, we have a lot of ad hoc committees in our school district, and, you know, some of them are actually in leadership positions to make recommendations about programming, about ways that we, you know, should think about spending money, or how, what have you. But I don't know if all of these ad hoc need committees, need, if we need to think about a conflict of interest policy. And so I don't know. I mean, obviously, there's like the site, school councils, that that's their job, and that's not really ad hoc, that's required. But we have lots of other committees in the district, you know, and I don't know if we need to think about that, about who serves in our, on our committees broadly. And again, I don't even know if it's an agenda item. But something to think about.
I think it could be, well, maybe it's a direction staff to look at that and see what we already have in place before we bring it back to the board for discussion or consideration. But I think when you look at conflict of interest, it's, you know, it's just like us as a board, you have to self-disclose that you have a conflict.
Right. And it wouldn't necessarily mean that people couldn't participate, but I mean, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean.
We don't vote on certain things, but I don't know.
Exactly. And I think that's part of it, too, as well. Ms. Parker?
Are you talking about committees that, are you concerned about conflict of interest in terms of hiring and purchasing?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, as opposed to...
Okay. We do have some board policy around that, and so maybe it'd be a quick look to be sure that, or to see if that aligns with the kind of thing that you're talking about. And then to then have the district do a review of whether or not we have some, as you say, ad hoc committees where inappropriate people are perhaps making recommendations around hiring or purchasing.
And we, because we may not, but we may not. I'm not, I'm not sure, but it's just a...
Well, I think at the very least, we could direct staff to look at that and look at our current policies. I know that, for example, in the work that I do, when we ever, when we do have committees reviewing decisions around funding, that we have to have everyone sign a conflict of interest form. So I don't know if that's a part of our policy, not sure, but that would be something to look at. Mr. Herron?
Coming event, I've received notice today that the League of Women Voters, on the 20th, week from tomorrow, at noon, is holding a pre-kindergarten, a vital investment in our future, a two-hour discussion. Mr. Romo is on the panel, and as is Michelle Robertson, our childhood preschool coordinator. So it should be an interesting panel discussion, and we're into, you know, the importance of early childhood education. So anybody who is interested might want to go to the League of Women Voters. It's at their Davis Center, Louis Davis Center on De La Vina Street, at 12 o'clock.
Thank you.
And take a bag lunch if you want food.
Any other items, future agenda items? The only thing that I had asked about as a future agenda item is to have a presentation done on our PEAK program and also include our community partners as part of that presentation. If there's no other items, I would like to adjourn our meeting for this evening. We are done.